Good evening, everybody, and welcome. I don't know if this microphone is on yet. There we go. Now we're better. All right. So, good evening, everybody. And July 18th, City Council meeting, the regular meeting of the West Sacramento City Council, the West Sacramento Redevelopment Successor Agency, and the West Sacramento Financing Authority. Mayor Cabaldin is not with us this evening, and so let's see. We do not have a closed session item. And start us off with a pledge. Mr. Alfonso Lornares, would you let us, lead us this evening in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic on which it stands, our nation under God, indivisible.
Item 1A is Presentations by the Public on Matters That Are Not on the Agenda But Within the Subject Matter Jurisdiction of the Council. The only slip that I have to speak this evening, item 1A, is Mr. Bill Lowell.
I'm old of West Sacramento for the record. Little thing that's kind of been bugging me for a few years here is when we push the button to signal that we want across the street as a pedestrian, when it comes on, you hear this deep voice saying, "199, 199." And it keeps repeating that until the walk signal comes off. And I was wondering why we don't have a short message in there that it's okay to walk now or safe to walk now, or look both ways before crossing as usual, or something like that relating to walking rather than the 199 thing. I think that should be checked out. And as you remember, at the Yolo Bus Meeting, West Sacramento and Woodland will be discontinuing school bus service as we know it. And I don't know whether Yolo Bus is going to take over that school bus service and under what conditions and how it will affect the other Yolo Bus service. I saw Eric on one of the local buses here making notes as to how many people were writing the number 211 at that time. So, I imagine they're taking that in consideration as to reallocation some of that service. So, thank you.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lowell. I'm sure the City Managers made note of that. And I also want to remind anybody who plans to speak on any of the items this evening, if you go ahead and fill out a slip now because it's going to make it a little bit easier so we're not shuffling through the papers. And once we start discussing the item, we're not going to accept any slips to speak on that item. So, item 1B is Council Communications. Are there any communications this evening? Mr. Johansson.
Thank you. The West Sacramento Housing Development Corporation met on July 12th, and probably the most significant issue outside of the routine business was the discussion of the Delta Lane. As you recall, that's the project where they're looking at Jamboree to come in and develop the affordable housing. They're working now on the limited partnership agreement, and the object would be for West Sac Housing Development Corporation to actually take over management as soon as possible after the facility is built, and then use John Stewart, who's the existing management company there, to manage that property as well. Today, the Community Choice Aggregation Exploratory Committee met, and as you recall, that's the exploratory committee, to look at whether or not it's beneficial to create a utility, a public or publicly-owned utility in Yolo County that would produce power with a view to reduce greenhouse gas emissions. So, at this point, it's just really just the electeds from the different cities and as a private sector folks. We had a presentation today on really what the financing looks like. And so, there's, we had a presentation from a company out of Marin County that's putting together Marin Energy Authority that is a community choice aggregation organization that San Francisco is actually starting to look at joining. So, there are questions about the cost of this and whether or not it's really a function of the government to do this type of thing. So, what they're going to be doing is presenting a workshop to this council, probably within the next month or so, to kind of go over what a community choice aggregation program is with a view to have the council here approve a resolution that basically shows an intent to at least keep looking at this project. Right now, the numbers really aren't finalized, so nobody's in a position to decide to do this or not. But, so, that should be coming up within the next month or so. That's it.
Great. Does not.
Just a brief note that on Monday, the 16th, this past Monday, I attended the meeting of the Yolo Natural Heritage Program, JPA Board in Woodland. The only real item we had there was, an important one in fact, is to install three new members. The board, as a result of the recent elections, we had new board member representation from Davis, from Woodland, and from Winters. It was important to get them installed because we're on our, we are now on a tight deadline to complete that project, the plan that, for the Yolo Natural Heritage Plan. And so, we want to keep the ball rolling on that. So, we felt it important to meet to do that. And so, hopefully, we'll have some progress reported after our next meeting, which is in early September. That's it.
Great. It's all the reports this evening, so I don't want to see council appointments, reappointments. There are none this evening. That moves us to the Presentations. Item 2 is a presentation of proclamation honoring Ian Gilmore for being awarded the VFW 2011-12 National Firefighter EMT of the Year. And I guess, Chief, you're going to lead us off? Oh, actually, you know what? I think we need a motion on the proclamation.
I'll move.
So, we have a motion in a second. All those in favor, sign off by saying aye.
Aye.
My motion carries unanimously with one absent. So, go ahead, Chief. Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem, Council, City Manager, and Staff, good evening. Gives me great pleasure and honor to be here this evening. We would like to, as you indicated, acknowledge the accomplishment of one of our firefighters. To give a little background and information on why we're here, I'd like to introduce Gary Reesons from the Veteran Foreign Wars. He's going to give us a little background on why we're here. Well, this award starts at post level, and Ian was picked at post level. We turn him into district level, and they all go through a committee. And from district, he went to state, state up to national. Ian put us on the map, put West Sacramento on the map. He put our post on the map. He took national out of all of UFWs in the United States of America. So, you can imagine how many posts that is. You know, we have over like 25 districts in our area, and we have 28 posts in our district. So, he's done quite a feat for his department in putting them, putting us on the map. I'm really, really proud of him, and we had no idea what happened. I get these phone calls, and he makes this, makes that, and then my government made national. I was just so shocked. So, I would like to bring him up here and present him the award, if you don't mind. Ian? The first award is from the department. That's the state level. So, this, and also, you get the check. So, congratulations from the state level, anyway.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's a check for $500. And this is the big one. This is the one that comes from national. And, I don't want to mess it up. This is the national level. So, you can see it. This is the National Commander, and that, he goes and sees the President of the United States. He goes in, when they make mistakes, he straightens them out. So, believe me, he's been there a couple of times. But, Ian, to present this to you from the National Commander, he sought himself and told me to present this to you. This is from the Commander of the last year, 2011, 2012, to congratulate you on your success on being the National EMT. Big, big honor. Big honor. Congratulations.
Like to say thank you for everyone being here. And Gary and the VFW and the City of West Sacramento, I humbly accept this reward, and I'll be donating the $500 to the Wounded Warriors Project and the National Fallen Firefighters Foundation. Thank you all for being here.
Thank you. So, Ian, before you go away, and actually, Gary, if you want to be up there as well, I know there are some folks that want to take some pictures of this event, but we also have a proclamation that we want to present to Ian this evening.
You're not done yet. Well, we all on Council in this city are really proud of the Fire Department and the accomplishments that you all have been able to do over the years. And for those who don't know what this is about, of course, we're very pleased to put West Sacramento on the map and to really show the courage you had in the sense that... I'm just going to read this proclamation because it goes basically about what had happened to get us to this point. Whereas Ian Gilmore, a firefighter with the West Sacramento Fire Department since December 2007, and currently stationed at Station 45, and whereas on June 26, 2011, West Sacramento Fire Department was dispatched to a child who was in a pool and had possibly drowned, and whereas upon arriving upon the scene, found a lifeless child next to the swimming pool, whereas firefighter Gilmore was commanded to take the child swiftly to the waiting ambulance and initiate CPR, and as whereas firefighter Gilmore continued to resuscitate the child while en route to the hospital, where after the child's care was transferred to the waiting UCD medical team. And whereas 10 days after this accident, the child was released from the hospital and even visited Station 45 to meet Ian and his crew. Now therefore, be your complaint to the City Council of the City of West Sacramento to hereby honor firefighter Ian Gilmore for his honor, heroic life-saving efforts in administering CPR and helping to save the life of this child. Really congratulate him.
Do you want to picture with us? Is that what, is that what you're waiting for? All right. Get the cameras in. We're in the back. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Thank you. Okay. Next, we have the Consent Agenda. I don't think we have more slips. No, we don't. So, Consent Agenda, we have Items 3 and 4. Are there any questions on either of those items? I have no slips to speak. Otherwise, looking for a motion? Okay. We have a motion in a second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All right. Consent Agenda item moves unanimously one absent, so the time's set, agenda approximately 7:30, not quite, but Item 5 is Community Development Code Enforcement. It's a continued public hearing and consideration of Resolution 12-30 certifying the list of code enforcement charges and assessing affected parcels for the costs of enforcement and abatement, and requesting the charges on the secured tax roll in the same manner as the general taxes. Good evening.
Good evening, Council Members. Larry Brooks, Community Development Department. The purpose of this report is to provide the City Council with sufficient information to conduct a public hearing regarding the placement of code enforcement charges on the secured property tax roll and to authorize the placement of a lien on the subject properties. We have averaged roughly 1,600 cases a year these last three years, and though the vast majority of code enforcement cases are handled without any enforcement fees, there are a small number of them that go beyond the first notice of violation and generate a bill, and a few more even go to a nuisance abatement hearing generating fees. And if not paid, we eventually have to present them to you, as now is the case in which we have 64 properties on the most recent list that was provided to you by way of an update memo that you hopefully just recently received. That also includes information on three properties in which the property owners are requesting a waiver. As you know, we employ a number of methods to encourage compliance with codes, but the most often used is the following fee process. Upon receiving a complaint, staff will inspect and verify violations. Then a courtesy notice of violation or a phone call or a direct visit with the property owner is then given, and they are educated and informed of the violations and given a timetable to comply. If they fail to comply within that timeframe, which is usually anywhere from two weeks to 30 days, upon reinspection, they are charged $130 and then given a notice to appear before a nuisance abatement hearing officer to explain why they're not complying with the codes. At that time, the hearing officer can either confirm there is a violation, confirm the fees, or determine there are no violations and waive the fees. Just before the hearing, there is a pre-hearing inspection, and if the violations are still there, there is a $65 inspection fee. And then the hearing is scheduled. At the abatement hearing, if the hearing officer does rule in favor of the city and orders the owner to comply, there is then an additional $510 fee. And then upon giving that decision, code enforcement is then instructed to do follow-up inspections periodically until the property owner comes into compliance. And that is the reason why you now have the list of those properties in which fees did accumulate and property owners did not pay those fees. Any questions?
Thank you, Mr. Brooks. Are there any questions?
I do. I do, Mr. Brooks. I see that on two properties, you're asking for a waiver, and that would be 922 Sacramento Avenue and 801 Hardy.
Yes, sir.
Okay. And then on the third one, it was that the waiver be denied, and that would be on West Capitol Avenue, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Actually, Councilman Kristoff, if I can clarify on 801 Hardy.
Uh-huh.
We were not recommending a waiver, but a deferral of the fees.
Oh, okay.
And based on some conditions.
Okay.
Catch later to that effect. Any other questions? All right. Thank you, Mr. Brooks. So, it is a public hearing, so I think at this point, open the public hearing, and we do have a few slips. See Darrell Kenworthy for speaker? Good evening.
Good evening. Property owner at 801 Hardy. Did you receive my letters? Yes. Okay. I don't want to go over everything again, just so that you understand that it hasn't been on purpose. Even though there hasn't anything that's been able to be done that takes us to a place of a, an inspection. In the last two, three months, things have turned around enough as far as, one, my work that's finally picked up, and then, two, just the time schedule's allowing me to put it back into the house. The problem still is, I can't just generate money out of nowhere. You know, when I'm working, I'm making money, and when I'm working, I don't have the time to work on the house. When I'm not working, I have time to work on the house, but I have no money to put into And it's, honestly, it's been amazing that we didn't lose the house and everything with the crash that happened in 2008, and, you know, we've been blessed. As you saw, we are making a transition, going away from contracting, back into what looks to be full-time ministry, but anytime you're dealing with special needs and disability communities, even in the public sector, those are tough areas to deal with as far as garnering up finances. When you're in the private sector, in churches, and being able to raise support, it's going to take me a while to be able to make that switch, to go away from building back into ministry. And it's happening, but it's just slow. And so, I'm just here to say, I don't want the city to be my adversary. It's not your responsibility to finish my house. I totally understand that. That's not what I'm here. I'm not asking for help. I'm just asking for some understanding and some leeway, and from what I hear over here, I haven't been, there hasn't been any communication that way that says that you willing to do that, but I hear at least a possibility. I appreciate the efforts that the head of the Building Department tried to get some help for me through the Contractor School. All I got was frustration and push aside from the school. Several calls that I made, either were not returned, would shuffle me to somebody else, and I began to just feel like a beggar, and I said, "Forget it." I just, there was not any help coming that way. There is some coming from other contractors right now to me that are personal friends as far as electrician and HVAC and stuff like that, that are willing to even donate to help me get this thing rolling, especially since they've seen that we're moving into the area ministry. They've just said they want to help us. So, that's good news, but it's just been hard, a little embarrassing. But, I'm not giving up. I don't want to see Roderick just become a, you know, strip houses for landlords. Our families lived on Hardy Drive for over 50 years.
Mr. Kenworthy, I'm going to need you to wrap up.
Okay. And my desire is to stay there as a homeowner and not just lose the house and see, you know, where I've been raised. So, anyway, I'm not exactly sure what to ask other than, you know, if you're not willing to waive them, at least somehow, you know. I'm willing to work with you to get a, get a, a plan going to move forward on this. But, if I have to pay this fee out, then any of that that I put aside to be able to work on the house just disappears.
Great. All right. It sounds like staff's interested in conversing with you on the issue, so thank you very much for your comments.
I have a question. Some of staff's recommendation, and that is to, in essence, sort of pull a building permit within the next 30 days, and also allow for 180 calendar days after issuance of the permit to be extended. Is that going to be enough time? Is that a step in the right direction?
It is, it is a step in the right direction. It would be a major step. The ability, at least as far as the original building plan, to be able to get it done that way, it would not. And, you know, if I just completely shut off one of, you know, one or two of the rooms and then took him a room at a time, was able to finish up what I've got, including getting heating and air conditioning back in my house and a few other things, that would work. I'm willing to work with them to do it. I've been doing all the work myself. I don't know if you've ever been by to see the property. Every bit of it's, you know, it's been my handiwork. I'd like to finish it.
Okay. So, I guess the way you really get the process started, and that is to pull a building permit within the next 30 days, is that going to be something you should be able to do? Do you have plans?
Does it have to be, does it have to be a completely new building permit? I mean, I've got one in the system.
No, no, it would be, that one has expired, and we just need to get that one reissued. So, you need, we need for you to reapply for a re-issuance of that permit.
Okay. Because you've already got the plans and everything on that one.
Correct.
Okay.
That's something you can...
Yeah. No, I haven't been working on the house without a permit, believe me.
No, I'm not worried about that, no.
Okay.
Yeah. All right. Great. Okay. That's all the questions I have.
Okay.
All right. Great. Thank you very much. All right. The next speaker is Mr. Gary Wright.
I managed the property, helped manage the property at 3205 West Capitol, Skylark Mobile Home Park. And I just came to, he wanted me to come tonight to say the last time this thing was scheduled, he had a funeral of a family member and couldn't be here. So, my wife and I came. They said they could not take it off the agenda. We had to speak. Well, he wanted to do the speaking, and he wants tonight to say that's the only reason we spoke was because she would not take it off the agenda. She said we had to, it was on the agenda and we had to do it. So, I'll let Mrs. Zerakani talk.
We had a hearing scheduled on January 2050, if I'm not mistaken. As I presented you the letter, we can, prior to that, I find out one of our friends' relatives passed away. We had to be, we had to be in Colmo, California for funeral. Two days prior to that, on 23rd, I contacted Mr. Brooks. I explained the situation. By his advice, that he said it's better I send somebody to the hearing and explain the situation to hearing officer, which I did, as I was told. The time they went to the hearing, they were told, "No, they cannot do that, and they have to present on my behalf," which I don't think that's fair, that's right, that's justified. After I received a decision from hearing officer, according to part of the right of appeal, says if I have, if I could not, or if I did not attend the hearing, I can contact the hearing officer and ask for a step aside or set aside the decision or for rehearing. Next day, on January 31st, I sent a certified letter to Mr., then, if I'm not mistaken, attention, and I didn't get any response from nobody until I received a fine or bill for 800-something. I contacted Mr. Brooks again. I explained the situation. They said you had, you had people behalf of you on the hearing, which that was not right. And I don't think it's fair and right for me to pay that penalty. And again, I asked, at least they should allow me to present myself. Maybe I was guilty. Maybe I had to pay that fine, but at least I had a right to speak my, on my behalf.
I'll ask staff to address that, so... Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
In response here, just a brief history on the case itself. It began in October of 2011. It involved a number of substandard housing conditions, both plumbing, electrical, and pest infestations. And because of the nature of the violations, when the nuisance hearing took place in January, the hearing officer felt that he had to make a decision so that we could move forward in terms of trying to correct the violations. As I mentioned before, our process involves first informing the property owner of the violations and giving them a timeline to comply, and then if they fail to do so, then we have no choice but to schedule a hearing and let the nuisance abatement hearing officer decide if we're going down the proper path or not. I did get a call from Mr. Zerakani two days before the hearing and did inform him that, given the nature of the violations, that we could not try to reschedule the hearing, that we did need to move forward, and that it seemed appropriate if his property managers could come and speak on his behalf, understanding the unfortunate circumstances with regards to the funeral that led to him not being present. The hearing officer did question the property managers as to the nature of the violations and why they were not being corrected, and in his opinion, felt that they did need to be corrected immediately and ruled in favor of the city with regards to the letter that the property owner, Mrs. Zerakani, sent to the hearing officer requesting that he reschedule. I can't respond to that. I'm assuming that the hearing officer, again, felt that his decision was appropriate and that there was not a need to rehear the case.
Is that unusual to have, to receive a request to reschedule for circumstances that we don't control, or is that, is that, I mean, is that common?
No, that does sometimes occur, and depending upon the nature of the violations and the length of time that the case has been held open, that plays a role in the hearing officer deciding if he will continue it or not. In this particular instance, the case had gone on far longer than typically occurs, and in fact, far longer than any other case that we have had with Mr. Zarekani. In, in part, that was due, to him trying to evict the tenant as opposed to correct the violations, and we were of the opinion that the violations needed to be corrected regardless of the outcome of the unlawful detainer.
Absolutely. I just want to get clarification on the process. So, the hearing officer, and forgive me for asking really dumb questions about the process. I'm not clear on it. But, so the hearing officer sets the meeting? And, and after, I guess you report or, or the folks in code enforcement report the violations, the hearing officer sets the meetings, and then that's when, the hearing, I should say?
Well, actually, we, we schedule the hearing. The hearing officer holds hearings once a month.
Okay.
And we only schedule them upon reaching the conclusion that the property owner is not going to comply with our notices to correct. So, if they fail to meet the deadline, then we send them a notice explaining to them that we're going to schedule a hearing with the hearing officer and that they will be allowed to then come and explain to the hearing officer why they will not comply.
So, in October of twenty-eleven, is that right? It was, you started off, I see, in the background of this case, it began in twenty...
October twenty-eleven, and then we found ourselves setting it for hearing in January because the property owner had not come into compliance. It was set for January twenty-fifth. On January twenty-third, we were contacted by the property owner indicating that he could not be present, and he wanted to have more time.
So, was that, I was going to go back to the October, because I'm getting, trying to get a sense of time. So, were these violations, or were we working with them prior to October, and then that's when we sort of?
We were, at that point in time, already incurring fees because the property owner had not complied with the original notice to correct violations.
In October of twenty-eleven, we were already incurring fees?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
I guess, Larry, has, have the violations been corrected?
No. At the time of the hearing, the violations had yet to be corrected. The violations actually were not corrected until March of twenty-twelve.
Questions? Nope. Okay. All right. Great. Thank you very much. All right. Our next speaker, Said Zarekani. So, yeah, you've submitted a slip to speak, so you're welcome to speak. I mean, you, you both kind of used the first three minutes. I guess you're entitled to your next three, so.
We were not, until now, we were not aware of any electrical we had. Some problem we had because of the tenant. We were trying to evict them because they were not paying the rent, and I contacted Mr. Brooks and his officer, his officer several times. I explained the situation, and I said, I asked him several ti, I asked her several times. I said, "Next time you want to go there, please let me know so I come with you, so I can show you what we did or what is happening." We were doing it, tenant was undoing it. Unfortunately, I was not there twenty-four seven to see when the enforcement code officer is at the place so I can explain it to them. I even explained the situation to Mr. Brooks. I said, "We are in process to evict them." He advised, "We have to do what we have to do, and that makes sense. We had to do it." But the problem is, we were doing something, and they were undoing it. We were getting called every single day, for instance, for clogging the sewage. How many uni, how many places, you know, every day they have a problem. We were getting those problem, and we did take care of lots of problem. Mr. Brooks said, "Talk to March." I don't think that is right. I had those two couple, they run the business, they run the park. You can ask them. We were doing every single time. But if we do and they undo it, and we are not getting opportunity to walk through with the enforcement code officer, how could we explain ourselves? And again, the electrical, they said, until now, you can ask the other two, they are with me, we were not aware of, and still we are not aware of any, any electrical or major violation.
Thank you. Thank you. The next speaker, the last speaker on this item is Michael Bajorkas.
I'm here on, got a letter on a lien of property, on my property on four-one-five Third Street that's going to be put on my taxes on a hundred and thirty dollar fine, that I complied with code enforcement, and it was Olivia Fowler that was following up on this case. And it might have been a time where I might have needed some extra time that was going on, but we made contact. During that time, everything got cleared up. I received a letter saying that I was going to be fined for not following through. Well, that was a letter that, that was something that she did not follow up on that seemed to come back after me. I had spoken with her during last year. She said that she would have cleared that situation up. Now, I'm coming back stating that now I have not followed through. I've got a lien coming up against me here. And so, everything has always been taken care of, always responded back with the Olivia Fowler, or whether it was Debbie Newman or anybody. I've never had any situations, but I've still got this carrying through. I had spoken a while back with Mr. Larry Brooks, and he said that this had been taken care of part of last year. Why isn't following now is what we, I had spoken with. And I said, "Well, I don't know, but it shouldn't be with me at all, Mrs. Fowler." So, today I had spoken to call up the code enforcement. I called Building First up here. I spoke right around ten forty-five, made a phone call to ask for Mrs. Olivia Fowler. She had not given me a call, and I had called them back again about, little barely after four o'clock. Still have not received a phone call. And so, now that I'm here to ask about this lien being on my property that should not be there, anything that she asked of has been cleared and signed off by her. So, I just want to explain about this so I don't have this put on my property.
Okay. Great.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Either Charlene or Mr. Brooks, did you want to respond to those comments?
I am not familiar with this particular case, being new director of code enforcement, so I will need Larry Brooks to give me some history on this.
All right. Sounds like he's getting some information before he responds.
Obviously, there is a dispute here, and we have some time to try to meet with the owner and try to clear it up. I know that oftentimes in situations such as this, where the property owner has stated that in the past, he has received notices from not only Officer Fowler, but Officer Newman and other officers, and he has always corrected the violations. As I've mentioned before, the way our process works, you have a timeline to comply, and in some instances, people do come into compliance. However, they don't come into compliance by the deadline, and as a result, they end up receiving the fees. And some individuals do state that, "Hey, I came into compliance. I shouldn't owe you anything." But the, the problem there is that it was not done in a timely manner. That may be the case here, that may not be. What I would suggest is that, in this instance, we meet with the owner and we try to clarify exactly what the circumstances are. And at that time, if the fees are still owed, then we would still request that they be placed on the property. With regards to the other property owner who spoke, Mr. Zarekani, one point of information is when the hearing officer sends out his decision, his decision always includes language describing the right to appeal to the city's Board of Appeals. So, if there had been any dispute with regards to the property owner feeling that if he had had an opportunity to speak to the hearing officer, he could have convinced him not to confirm the fees, then there was that second opportunity to do it in front of the Board of Appeals, at, at which case, if the Board of Appeals overruled the hearing officer, then his fees would have been waived at that time, but he did not exercise that right.
And that timeframe has already come and gone?
That timeframe has already come and gone.
And so, it sounds like, I mean, at least in the, the case of Mr. Zarekani, so he had tenants in there, and it sounds like he was trying, trying to do something to remediate the violations, but there were issues with the tenants? I mean, is that what was happening with it? I mean...
Yes, that, that was his contention. The city's practice is if a property owner is in the midst of an unlawful detainer action, we will not press them with regards to correcting minor violations, but our position, and we communicate that to the landlord, is that anything that is considered public health and safety, such as the, he mentioned the electrical, or the plumbing leak, or the pest infestation, we will still demand that they take some action while they're seeking their unlawful detainer. Especially in cases like this, we, we take that position because you never know what the outcome is going to be in terms of an unlawful detainer. In this particular case, the tenant was represented by legal services, and initially, the judge ruled in favor of the tenant, and so the tenant was allowed to stay longer than what the property owner had anticipated. And therefore, again, our position was until you straighten things out with the tenant, we are, still have a responsibility to make sure that those immediate health and safety issues are addressed.
Okay. All right. Well, I, I mean, I know, Mr. Brooks, in my experience with your operation, I know you run a very fair operation. You're, you're bound by a series of ordinances and processes and requirements that, that certainly provide ample opportunity for folks to come into compliance. So, okay. Well, thank you for, for your comments, response to the public testimony. So, it is a public hearing. That's all the slips that I have to speak on these issues. So, I will close the public hearing, and I will return it back to, I'm sorry, sir, we've already, we've already closed the public hearing. So, return it back to the council for further discussion, unless staff has any other input?
Nothing further.
Okay.
I, if I may, just thank you, Mr. Mayor Pro Tem. So, on the, the, the final case, which, I forgot the gentleman's name, but it's Mr. Bajorkas' case. Is that the case you're proposing to go back and get more information on? Okay? Because I think, you know, I, I am not as familiar with the processes, and I believe you do, it's a fair process, and, but you are bound by the ordinances the city has put forward. I just would, I would have, would appreciate kind of understanding that a little more in terms of, kind of, before we, we kind of rule on that one, just to get more information would be helpful. No, I'm sorry, the public hearing's closed right now, so this is, council's, I'm sorry. But, so, if I could offline or online as well, meeting, get some sort of primer on sort of the, the processes, I appreciate your laying that out and timelines, what your expectation is, because I'm sure this will crop up, and nobody wants the lien on their, on their property. And I'm sure everybody that spoke tonight is, is well-intended to get those done. I just want to make sure I understand what notices are going out, what is the language on those, and, because I just want to make sure that I understand it as we go forward. So, the action tonight will be, will go forward, except there's one item? Is that what you're asking now?
Yeah. The action would be to move forward, including the updates we gave you and the recommendations we gave you in the memo. And then, for this particular one, since this wasn't contemplated, I would propose that you authorize the city manager to either waive it if it is determined that it shouldn't be on the list and/or leave it included if there's evidence to indicate that it should remain.
Now, I would make that motion.
Okay. Well, I, I, I think that one of the things that needs to happen is, is, is Mr. Bajorkas and, I forget the code enforcement officer's name, but, I mean, I, I, I think that this motion, I think, covers it because it's, we really don't put this assessment on the tax rolls immediately, and there is some time that he can talk to Mr. Brooks, city manager, whoever, and see if there's, if everything's been taken care of, well, then, you know, that, that's the way it should be. But I would go along with the recommendation that staff has made.
Okay. So, we have a, we have a motion?
I guess one of the other things, I just, for the property on eight oh one Kenworthy's, just make sure he goes in and either gets a notice, come in and redo his building permit, or he needs to hear it from us somehow, that, you know, you need to do that, and you can get the process started. It gives you a hundred and eighty days, and I don't know if that's going to be enough time, but at the same time, we need to get the process started.
All right. Well, we have a motion.
I'll second the motion.
And with the second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with one absent. Thank you very much. Moving on, item six is the public hearing and first reading of ordinance twelve dash three and ordinance twelve dash seven regarding proposed amendments to the zoning ordinance. That's Ms. Hamilton or Sandra. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and members of the city council. The proposed zone amendment spanned a variety of topics and issues and include minor cleanup and edits, revised and new land use definitions, amendments to the land use matrix, and changes to the city's parking requirements. The city council conducted a workshop on the proposed changes on June sixth, two thousand and twelve, and concerns were raised about two of the proposed amendments. One relative to daycare centers and the second one related to backyard chickens, and I would just like to briefly provide some feedback on those two items. The council directed staff to seek input from childcare, the childcare industry regarding the proposed change to allow daycare centers as an accessory use in the limited industrial and business park zones rather than a principal standalone use. The reason for the proposed change is that both zones allow industrial uses that, in some instances, depending on location and surrounding uses, may not be compatible with standalone daycare uses. And so, as an accessory use, a daycare center would be not available to the general public but would allow an employer to provide onsite daycare. And staff solicited input from the daycare industry. The city's early learning services director is not opposed to the proposed change and directed staff to contact staff from Portside Montessori and also Storeby Cottage. And Storeby Cottage staff felt that if the use is allowed as an accessory use, it should also be allowed as principal use. We contacted staff from the Portside Montessori, and staff supports growth in the industrial areas and did not want to, didn't want, did not want to see a daycare center, you know, hinder a potential growth. And so, based on the feedback that staff received, we did not receive a definitive position, you know, from the industry regarding the proposed change. It has been staff's experience that locating daycare centers in industrial zones can pose, can be challenging. In two thousand and eight, the planning commission approved a conditional use permit for a daycare center that was proposed to be located in Southport Business Park. The Department of Social Services wanted the conditional use permit to be, be approved first, but at the end of the day, the department denied the application because the applicant was not able to provide outdoor play area. Licensed facilities are required to provide seventy-five square feet of outdoor play area for each child, and the reason that the applicant cannot provide the outdoor play area was because of air, onsite air quality issues. In considering this change, the council should be aware that the proposed amendment would not affect the limited industrial and business park zones, business park, properties that are subject to development agreements such as Southport... that are subject to development agreements such as Southport Business Park and Riverside Center because these are vested in earlier versions of the zoning ordinance, which allowed daycare centers either as a permitted, as a principal standalone use or as an accessory use. Moving on to backyard chickens, it was raised at the workshop that, there was some concern, excuse me, there was concerns raised regarding the number of small domestic animals that would be allowed under the existing regulations, and concerns were also raised regarding potential nuisance concerns. There are three issues in the animal keeping ordinance that I want to point out regarding urban chicken keeping. The first issue is that fowl is included or defined as a large domestic animal in our animal keeping ordinance, and it clearly states that large domestic animals are not allowed on parcels that are less than one acre. And so since most of the parcels in the industrial zones are less than one acre, chicken keeping is permitted, is prohibited. And in an effort to legalize chicken keeping on parcels that are less than one acre, the proposed amendment would allow chickens to be defined as small domestic animals regardless of the lot size. The second issue that was raised at the city council involves the number of small domestic animals in general that would be allowed in multifamily zones. And under the existing ordinance, each family living in a multifamily complex or development would be allowed to have four domestic animals, but the number of animals that would be allowed would be superseded by any leasing agreement that that tenant signs. The last issue that was raised at the public workshop involves potential nuisance issues. Last year, code enforcement processed 29 animal nuisance cases. Thirteen of those cases involved chickens. Ten of those complaints involved incessant noise from roosters, and the remaining three cases involved chickens encroaching in neighbors' yards and complaints about odor. Staff surveyed surrounding jurisdictions regarding urban chicken keeping, and regulations vary from city to city. Most of the cities include setback provisions for enclosures such as, you know, the chicken coops and some, also include some nuisance provisions. Citrus Heights was the only city in the area that required a minimum lot size for keeping chickens. And if the city council feels that stricter controls should be in place for urban chicken keeping in the city, additional revisions would have to come back in another zone amendment update. This concludes staff's presentation. Staff will be happy to answer any questions, and staff is recommending that the city council conduct a public hearing, waive the first reading and read by title and number only ordinance 12-3 and ordinance 12-7, and inform the audience that the second reading and adoption of both ordinances is scheduled for August 1, 2012.
Thank you, Ms. White. So this is a public hearing. I don't have any slips to speak. So with that, we will, with that, we will open and close the public hearing and return it back to council for consideration, discussion, or motions. Mr. Anderson, I'm sorry.
I, I think, you know, we talked about this at length the last time it was in front of us, and, you know, I think it's probably okay the way it's written now. My concern was really about the chickens and the noise and things of that nature. And I think realistically, if it becomes a problem, we can do something about it, but, you know, I don't see everybody going on getting chickens all of a sudden. But, you know, if it looks like it's going to be an issue, you know, I know in our neighborhood we have a stray cat issue, so it wouldn't be the first small animal that's gotten, you know, that we have to pay attention to. So, so yeah, I think I'm fine with it. And on the parking, we've went over that in detail. We haven't, I haven't received any comments either way on either side, so, you know, in general, I think these probably are appropriate ordinances, the changes to the zoning right now.
Yeah.
Yeah, I guess, for me, especially when it comes to apartment living and things like that, I would like to have, I'll go ahead and support this, but at the same time, I would like to have some data or some information or maybe another part of this ordinance, maybe a revision to it, because number one, I think chickens ought to be in coops. And, or if not, then if some apartment complexes have fenced-in little backyards, and that would be okay, because then they're not going to go over to the neighbor's yards or they're not going to wander all around and things do the things that chickens do. But, so I would like to have something come back at a future council meeting, talking about how there are some controls, especially in apartment complexes with chickens. Now, homeowners and things like that, they have a way to pin them in, they have a way to fence them in and do all those things, and I don't really have, you know, a big problem with it, provided there's no roosters and they don't become a nuisance from a noise perspective. But, anyway, so those are the comments that I would have.
Thank you. I just want to make a quick comment. Thank you for coming back to us and having some more information. I want to talk briefly about, I support all the ordinances. The one I want to just address is a daycare center, because I was on the planning commission when that was first brought up, and I recall that whole case very well. But at the time, you know, it was a bit of a different time in 2008. There was a lot of building going on, and I remember one of the issues we were having, and Shirley and program members is too, was, and I think I brought it up back then, was we were having issues both with daycare centers and I think churches were trying to move in some of the industrial areas, and schools was the other one I think we were having issues with. And it was, it stemmed from the lack of affordable property or areas, facilities that they can move into. Southport was still being built out, and I'm guessing values are pretty high back in the 2006, 2008 era. So it's just, to me, it's kind of stems, as we look forward, I'm supportive of the way this is written. I think it's the right thing because of what we learned. But the other part we need to learn from this is that to try to look when we go through our general plan, thinking about land uses and how can we encourage some property where small businesses can afford, and not just daycare. And those are properties that need to be in urbanized areas and have a place to be other than industrial parts of town. So how can we learn from that to be able to, when development starts again and those businesses want to come forward, that they could find a small plot of land and to build a facility, or they can jointly put together properties so that two or three tenants can be in it and afford it for those types of uses? I think, I'm not saying ours don't now, but it's probably worth evaluating a little bit. And just reading up a little bit on urban planning, I know that there's some, some probably solutions we can look into, just as an aside, because the services are still needed. I'm glad Storybook agreed with kind of what we found and the other ones agreed to what we found, but there will be more needed as we continue to build, not just in Southport, but in the Bridgethe district and everywhere else. There's going to be those services that are needed, and so it's going to be critical that we find space for them to move into, so they're not relegated to industrial areas. So that's my only comment. Thank you.
All right. There are no other comments. Looking for, or Ms. White's looking for a motion?
I'll move the recommended action.
All right, we have a motion.
I'll second it.
And a second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously with one absent. Again, thank you very much. All right, let's see. We're going to move a couple items around here. No, not yet. Item seven is public hearing and consideration of resolution 12-12 certifying the list of weed abatement charges directing that the lien, or a lien be placed on the subject properties and requesting inclusion of these charges on the secured tax roll in order that they may be collected in the same manner as general taxes. Good evening, chief.
Mayor Protem, council members, good evening again. As directed by resolution 12-11, which initiated the 2012 weed abatement process back in May, the fire department notified owners of properties which had a weed nuisance creating a fire hazard. I'm here tonight to close the 2012 weed abatement process. All properties requiring weed abatement by the city have been abated, and a list of the charges by parcel has been created. It is respectfully recommended that the council open the public hearing to receive objections to the charges for mandatory weed abatement service initiated by the city and adopt resolution 12-12 certifying the list of weed abatement charges and directs the Yolo County auditor to add the expense to the individual tax rolls.
All right, great. Thank you, chief. Are there any questions? Seeing none, so you've asked us to open up the public hearing, which I will do. We have no slips to speak on this item, so unless there's any reason, I will close the public hearing, and I will turn it back to the council for deliberation or motions. Questions, Mr. Anderson?
Yeah, chief. The only, I think we mentioned this last time, there's a number of city lots that haven't been abated, and I know I've received calls about, you know, weed abatement and penalties going out for folks that haven't knocked down their weeds and the city's property still remains, you know, weeded. I understand that there's a discussion now to coordinate city-owned property weed abatement, so we're not having each of the individuals' department handle that. Is that kind of what's going on?
Pretty much, yeah. We don't treat them any different than we do residential. The weed abatement program manager, Brian Johnson, he can give you a little more information if.
Evening, Mayor Protem and council members. In regards to city properties, as the chief stated, we don't treat them any differently, and you're correct. This is my first year handling weed abatement, and I've learned quite a bit in this process. One was how we can better manage our own properties. So I got together with the different departments, and what we kind of came together to decide was it may be better to kind of consolidate our efforts towards weed abatement instead of the different departments, you know, doing one thing and another doing another, anyways, putting it together. And we cited to do that kind of, kind of late for the season in regard to city properties, but one thing we need to do, we're kind of on a tight timeframe in regards to submitting charges to the tax roll. It was important to get that done because our weed abatement contractor was, had a tight schedule. As a matter of fact, I met with him today to kind of finalize city properties, and he's got it on schedule, hopefully to finish by the end of this week, if not next week.
All right, because I think the first notices go out in March or something like that? March or, yeah, April or May, so, you know, my suggestion would be to, you know, try and get the city property done as quick as possible.
I agree.
So we don't have these comments, you know. I know there's a lot that are tender and dry right now, and in fact, those are some of the comments I've had, that they're a fire hazard, so.
I absolutely agree, and we plan to do that next year.
Okay, all right, thanks.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other questions or comments on that item? I think I already opened it up and closed it, so it's back to us for questions, comments, or motions?
I'll make a motion.
All right, so a motion on the floor.
Second.
The second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously, again with one absent. Thank you very much, and we're moving on.
And just to clarify, the motion, staff recommendation.
Staff's recommendation is what we moved. Thank you very much. All right, so let's see. So the city manager has asked us to take a couple things out of order, so it looks like we're going to skip item eight for the moment, or do we want to just discuss that one?
The recommendation, in, as a courtesy to our guests, is to take items 10 and 11 before item eight.
Okay, all right, very good. So we'll do that without any questions. So item 10 is presentation and update on the AB 109. I think that's Chief Drummond's item.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor Protem, council. We come back to you periodically with updates on AB 109, and tonight's is a little bit different. Rather than reporting out on what's been happening in the city with the individuals assigned to the post-release community supervision program, we thought you'd give you an overview of the budget and programmatic elements of AB 109 for the coming year. The Community Corrections Partnership has been meeting, a series of meetings, and subcommittees. And based on that, the executive committee of the CCP has submitted a recommended budget and programming elements to the board of supervisors. The board will be considering that for concurrence, their concurrence in that plan on July 24. And so we wanted to come to you before that time to give you this brief. If you look at page two of your agenda report, you will see the budget figures for this coming year, this 12, 13 year, and you can see the state allocated to slightly in excess of $6 million to Yolo County to handle the post-release community supervision programs. There was also, though, some unused, some carryover monies from the prior year of a little over $240,000, so that put the available monies almost at $6.3 million. And so that's the budget monies there. Also on that page, you can see the recommended funding allocations by department. So that actually does not give you necessarily the full impact of the description of the programs, but we'll get back to that in just a little bit. But you can see the different departments there. One, I believe the report in your agenda may not have this piece of information. Under Treatment Services/Day Reporting Center, DRC, in the agency line, I think you have question marks. That was an oversight. And really, that will be done by, that's various departments are involved in the treatment services in the Day Reporting Center, so that's various departments that are going to be involved in. Probably most notably, my co-presenter tonight, Kim Suterman, from the Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Department of Yolo County, she's prepared actually to talk about that in a little bit and answer any other questions, more in depth than I could probably on the, on the programmatic elements of the, of the plan. But if you back onto page one under the analysis section, you will see the major identified priorities for the coming year, and you can see that the Day Reporting Center is a major item, the Educational Employment Services, the Independent Living Needs, offender accountability services, pre-trial program. It goes on to the next page, and these treatment and rehabilitative services. And so that is a little more, gives you a little more feel for how the money is going to be, going to be spent. Probably most notably, too, you might be interested in for, you'll see a line back on that chart on page two for local law enforcement, local police departments, a $400,000 line item. That is money that we had last year also, the first nine-month period. It was only $300,000 then. And this is money allocated for the local police departments to work with the probation department in carrying out their responsibilities. So we're actually working in conjunction under the umbrella of the probation department in the monitoring of the people assigned to the different cities and to make sure that they're in compliance with their terms and conditions. So that's what that item is. With that, I was going to ask Kim to come up.
Chief, can I ask you a question on that $400,000?
Certainly.
Is, is that the allocation for each community?
No, that's the total for the four cities.
For the four cities?
Mm-hmm.
And how is that divided up? Because I noticed in here, Woodland has a disproportionate number of people, in essence, going back to Woodland. And then, of course, West Sacramento is next, and then Davis and Winter. So is that money split up on a percentage basis?
Yeah, there was a formula developed. Mr. Ross helped with that before his departure. While I was working at the chief level, he was working at the city manager level, and a formula was developed that splits the money on, on a set of criterion, which is the number of those PRCS individuals assigned to your community. It also then works on the, your Part I crime rates, because that's the measure that we're concerned about. Are these PRCS people in our community impacting that Part I crime rate? And so that's part of the formula. And then the population, there's a population stipulation. So that's how it worked. And so what happened based on last year where the allocation was equal, and Mr. Kristof, you commented on that, you know, during the year. This time, Woodland received obviously the largest share because of the impacts on their community, and the city Davis's share dropped significantly. In a sense, our share stayed almost status quo.
Sure.
And so if you look at And so if you look at the money that was previously allocated to Davis, based on last year's division of the money, essentially went to Woodland this time because of their disproportionate number and the impacts that are causing this. So that's what happened.
Okay, thank you.
Kim, come on up. Again, Kim is the Director for Alcohol, Drug, and Mental Health Department for Yolo County, and I asked her just to give a brief overview of the Day Reporting Center, and maybe some of those programmatic elements that might be delivered through that. Kim?
Good evening, Mayor Protem and Council members. Kim Suterman. So the Day Reporting Center is really designed to be a place where those that are either been released, and it will actually straddle where there will be some that could be coming from the jail, going to the Day Reporting Center during the day, and returning back to jail somewhat of a test to see how they can do as they're out and about, but in a confined setting, in a contained setting. And then those that are on community release, maybe on electronic monitoring or not, and the center would be a place where somewhat of a one-stop-shop, where treatment services, probation would be there, doing some of their work with the probationers, and other treatment services would be there as well. So the research has shown that if you just provide one thing, intensive case management by probation, treatment only, drug and alcohol services only, and you don't do a package deal, the recidivism rate is very high. And so the research has really shown that you need to provide a package to these folks depending on their individual need. So one of the pieces of the process will be probation, doing some kind of a criminogenic evaluation that would tell them, these are the identified areas of need, and then as they go to receive those services, a more in-depth evaluation would be done. So for instance, if they've identified a drug and alcohol treatment need, then the probation officer wouldn't do the assessment for what kind of treatment, a drug and alcohol specialist would do that. But they would be identifying the areas of need. The top areas that have been identified so far, either through individual surveys or looking at the patterns and interviews that probation has already done with many of the high-risk members, is kind of, we categorize them into three areas. One of them is education, training, and employment. Those are the top things that those folks are looking for and/or need. The next thing is anger, aggression management, and coping skills training, those are things as well. And then the third category is really in relation to drug and alcohol treatment use and abuse. That's the three top ones. There are definitely a group, a small group, an expensive group, that are seriously mentally ill, that need treatment, and when I say small, of the large numbers that have been released right now, our department is serving 12. So it's a small number, but they're an expensive number, and they're not people that you don't want on medication and being monitored closely. Because if we don't do that, then they'll hit the streets, and there will be other challenges. And then some of them have some residential needs. So those are the categories. The Day Reporting Center is really much like a one-stop-shop where folks can be there. We know that there are some issues, because initially, the proposal is that it would start out in Woodland. So we know the rest of the community members, there's an issue. You know, not everybody lives in Woodland. So it's perceived as beginning. Supervisor Mike McGowan has very much asked about that in relation to West Sacramento. There are members in Davis, we've got Winter's in Esparta as well. So we know we're beginning somewhere, we're beginning small, and we will be putting out an RFP that will hopefully draw in known entities who have done Day Reporting Centers before, have some knowledge with our community-based providers who already have, know many of this, many in this population have been serving to respond jointly. So it's a partnership program, again, serving those that would come daily, some that maybe just released to the community, and some that would report daily or three times a day, something like that, at the Day Reporting Center. That's kind of a quick overview, and I'll entertain any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I do, I do have a question. Of those, especially the 12 that you commented on?
Yes.
Why are they released?
They are not perceived to be a danger enough to the community that they, I mean, they're, they're in the category, meeting the criteria for release. That doesn't mean they don't have serious mental illness, somebody else has drug and alcohol problems, someone else may have other things. So they still have a treatment need, and when they're stable on treatment, they stay on track. So again, it's all about the services that you provide and that you make sure you're working with them. And we work very closely with probation. We get the call, we know when they're coming over, probation lets us know who's coming, and they're much more tightly case managed by probation. We're watching them very much closer as well. The doctor psychiatrist is seeing them frequently.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments? Well, actually, first of all, thank you very much for coming this evening, and I know that this, this system change that we're going through isn't something that you necessarily asked for, but it's something that we've now, it's landed in our laps, and we have to figure out a way to make this work. And I, and I just wanted to thank you very much for coming this evening, because it's, it's good information for us to have and to understand kind of what you're trying to do, because most folks don't really understand kind of what's happened or what's different than things were, say, in September of last year.
Exactly.
So, so I know that you're sort of working through a lot of this, and so thank you very much for coming, and congratulate Mr. Marlon Yarber, who's now your interim
Yes, he's a-
Chief probation officer.
Absolutely.
Who I think is a very capable man, and wish him, wish him the best. So thank you very much for coming this evening. I just wanted to just make sure that we're hearing, you know, a lot of what we're trying to do here, as I said, is predicated on what's been sort of handed to us as a sort of a change in how we're gonna do business. And a lot of the folks that we're talking about that are gonna receive these services are otherwise gonna be in the community without any services. I mean, I think there's a general consensus that locking our way out of this isn't really gonna work anymore. There's just not the resources to continue to lock up people that aren't gonna get any better by being locked up. Whether you agree philosophically or not, there just isn't the resource, there aren't the resources anymore to continue doing business the way we have been. So that being said, there is, as was alluded to earlier this evening, a lot of good information out there that says that, you know, these Day Reporting Centers serve as sort of as a way to provide these wraparound services, everything from the, you know, the mental health, the substance abuse, the anger management, and you name it. I guess my question is, you don't have to answer, but I guess my question will continue to be, if we're gonna go down this path, and it sounds like we're moving slowly but surely down that, that path, and I know that you mentioned that there's gonna be a criminogenic evaluation, or a risk needs assessment, or a risk, risk assessment. It would seem to me that we want to make sure that as we're doing these assessments and we determine what these folks need, that we have the capacity to serve them. Otherwise, it's great information to determine what those risks are, and what the risk factors are, and what the needs are, but if we have nowhere to turn for those services, it's not gonna do any good. We have a great, you know, laundry list of, you know, a stack of papers that tell us what they, what the risks are and what the needs are, but no capacity to do anything about it. And so I know that's part of your Phase Two, I guess, if you will, and your, your sort of inventory of what services are available. So I'm gonna be particularly interested in seeing kind of how that rolls out. The other part for me, and that is, you know, I know you guys are going down this road, and I know we only have very limited say in kind of how this rolls out, but I would really encourage you to explore using internal resources for this Day Reporting Center. I think in some respects, an RFP, I know, I think you indicated you were looking for folks that may not have ever done this before, or have, I wasn't-
No, we are definitely hoping to have entities that have done Day Reporting Centers before. Day Reporting Centers have actually been around for many, many, many years, but California was kind of thrust into this issue by the decision of the legislature and the governor. So all of a sudden, counties are on a fast track, unlike others that were just, let's look at different ways to do business differently. So no, we are looking for and hoping, there are several entities out there that have been doing this for years, are doing it in other counties in California, and we are hoping that they will respond to the RFP. There is a potential opportunity that we can learn from them and take over, meaning they start us out, we wanna start with the framework, we wanna follow the evidence-based practice model so that we're successful, and as we learn how to adhere to that model, then we may be able to replicate it. Probation will be actively involved, participating at the DRC, as will the sheriff, and so there will be folks right there on a regular basis with local community providers who have already been serving many of these folks already, also there. So we see it very much as a county -community partnership, and the sooner we can see how it all works, and then figure out what the top areas are that we have kind of sorted out so far. And so we do have to look at the high risk, because you can't, we definitely don't have enough money to serve everyone. So we're gonna start, we're starting with the top high-risk folks, and of those high-risk folks, what are the top three, five needs that they have? So not all of them, but we know if people don't have employment or some way to spend their time, you know, if you have too much unstructured leisure time, then you spend it unwisely. So we want structured time as much as possible, we want to have better skills. How do I cope with when I get ticked? How do I cope with when I'm frustrated how I deal with my anger? So we know that anger management and coping skills is really key. And the prevalence of drug and alcohol substance use problems is really high in this population. So we've got to treat that population, they've gotta learn, you know, most of these folks, you know, started out as social drinkers in high school, and it, you know, which means they started below age and continued on. So we need to address the drug and alcohol use as well.
Okay, right, great. And so Chief, are you expecting something up and running anytime soon, or what's your projected timeframe for the?
So, we're working on a draft RFP, and probation, the sheriff, and myself are working with the county purchasing to get some drafts going, and so we actually have started that this week. We present before the Board of Supervisors next week, and our hope is to roll out the RFP very soon, and we will be asking for bids, a combination of a Day Reporting Center entity, as well as the treatment providers, working together. So we'll, it'll be a pretty large RFP, asking for folks to submit what they think they can do. We already know of entities on the Day Reporting side and on the treatment side who want to apply. They're waiting and waiting and chomping at the bit for the application. So we're actually hoping it will roll out pretty quickly. It was a unanimous vote by the CCP Executive Board, of which both Chief Drummond and I are members, to put this before the Board of Supervisors, and that carries a lot of weight with the Board, that we were unanimous in our agreement. So we're hoping this will move forward quickly, and we can get it out and get going.
All right, okay, well, thank you very much for that. It was just a presentation, so there's no action needed on our part.
Is this possible?
No, there is not, that's what they're- Okay, item 11 is consideration of approval of a contract with MBK Engineers and a status report on the levy improvement program. Mr. Bissette, good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem, members of the City Council. I guess it's not working tonight. Tonight's item before you is consideration of approval of a contract with MBK Engineers and a status report of the flood protection program. Have the agenda put on in a minute. My agenda tonight will be a discussion of the MBK contract, and then I'm gonna highlight a quick update on levy improvements, current funding, the federal credit update, FEMA update, and Central Valley Flood Protection Plan update. On the MBK contract, MBK has provided project management services to the city in West Safka for the past six years. MBK has been a vital partner in the success of the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program, and significant progress has been made to date on our program. MBK provides many critical functions to our program. I've listed a lot of those in the agenda report, and I just wanted to highlight a couple of those tonight. Two key functions that MBK provides to the program are program funding support and program implementation support. MBK provided a critical role in securing a 90% cost share for our North Area projects. This is the highest state cost share that any agency has received under the state's EIP program. That was a real win for our program. MBK prepared the budget justification proposal that supported the FY 1314, $75.5 million budget change proposal that the state put into their budget, which was approved. That, and combined with the $87 million that we previously had in the state budget proposal, we have a total of $161 million committed by the state to our program. MBK plays a very active role in managing both our design funding agreement and our construction funding agreements with the state. They perform critical tasks and, and management of those funding agreements, and they play a key role in sitting down with the state reps to determine our current cash flow needs, securing payments, and keeping the money rolling so that our program keeps moving forward. They also support us on sizing of our bonds and coming up with our finance strategy for our local share for these projects. On the program implementation support side, MBK guides the design and permitting processes for all our early implementation projects, and they're currently working on the Southport Sacramento River Early Implementation Project. They provide guidance and support to the city on our FEMA remapping issues. They provide legislative and policy support at the state and federal level, and as several of the council members know, they play a key role in our cap-to-cap meetings when we go back to Washington DC and lobby for our flood protection interests. They also assist in our Section 408 permissions from the Army Corps, and working on our encroachment permits for the Central Valley Flood Protection Board. Some of the contractual considerations I wanted to highlight to the Council tonight. MBK has been with us for the past six years. Back in 2009, or 2008, 2009 time period, you know, we've all, the city was hit with the economic situation that we're all in, and MBK held their rates at the 2009 levels, and they haven't adjusted those, and that's what we applied to this contract before you today. MBK's costs as part of this project are essentially funded 70% by the state. So the majority of their work is put onto the projects that are EIP projects, and those are funded by the state. So 90% of the work that they did for the EIPs in the north were funded by the state, and we're assuming about a 70% funding share from the state for our Southport project. So that's a huge portion of this contract that is paid for by others, and we're the recipients of the value that we get from that work. I believe MBK is more valuable to the city in West Safka now than they were back in 2007 when we first brought them onboard. I thought I'd pause there before I launch into the program update to see if there were any questions on the MBK contract, or if you want, we could wait till the end, or if you'd like to handle that.
Nope, keep going.
Okay, let's keep going. So on the levy improvements, I wanted to quickly highlight some of the successes that we've had. On the Rivers and CHP Academy projects, we all participated in the ribbon cutting ceremony. It was a very successful event. Not only did it highlight the success of that project, or both of those projects, but we made it an effort to highlight the partnership that we have with the state and federal partners. And it was a really good event. It really showed state and federals that our success is their success, and we all need each other to move forward to construct these levy improvements. And I know from direct responses back from both state and federal partners that they really appreciated that, and they really value that effort that we go through. We're closing out those projects now, so we're in the middle of doing our construction documentation reports, so that at the end of the day, we can certify these levy improvements. So we're quickly moving forward to closing those out. Currently, we've received $25 million from the state for these projects, and we're continuously working on getting additional payments. MBK was very critical in getting the state to submit a $4.5 million payment to us right before the blackout period, before they went into their state budget, so that was- So that was a critical element for our cash flow purposes. On the Sacramento Bank Protection Project in Southport, the Army Corps is currently in construction. As you know, they started that in 2010. They had some issues with that project. It's currently underway. They completed the slurry wall construction. Right now, the Chevron Pipeline is being relocated. They're in a settlement period for that slurry wall to settle, and then they're gonna come back in and finish the fill, embankment fill work. So that project should be completed at the end of this year. We're really pushing them to get that done so that we can get South River Road reopened. I'll continue to provide updates in council newsletters and at our West Safka Board on that project, because that one's ongoing and we're keeping a close eye on it. On the Yolo Bypass deficiency repairs, those projects are completed. We're currently waiting on record drawings from the Corps. And those projects were successful in being completed in 2011. The Southport Sacramento River EIP, this project, you know, we're the lead on, West Safka is the lead on this project. We're currently in the design process. We've been providing a lot of cooperation and coordination with the property owners. We implemented a very aggressive public outreach campaign for this project. We're trying to be as transparent as possible because there are gonna be impacts to property owners as part of this project. We're really making every effort we can, and we're reaching out to the property owners to say, you know, "Come in and meet with us. Whatever information you want, we're gonna provide." We wanna go over that information with them. We've been holding public workshops and nightly meetings. And then, property owners have been coming in and meeting with us one-on-one. So I think that's been going very well as of late. The West Safka Board will be, they have selected an alternative to advance on design, six out of the seven segments. Segment B, which is in the southern portion of the reach of project, will be going to the Board, probably not, we thought it was gonna be in August, and it's looking like the decision on Segment B is gonna slip out to September. We're doing a lot of coordination with our Board of Senior Consultants, and we're really tightening the screws on our value engineering analysis in that section. So we're doing everything we can to minimize impacts to property. So that's the status. So we're expecting a decision by the West Safka Board in probably September. In the meanwhile, we're advancing design. We hope to be at a 65% level of design in November, December of this year. That's a critical period for the real estate acquisition process. We need that level of design so that we can do our Platts and Legals and get out and do appraisals on, so we identify what the needs are, what the property needs are, whether it's in fee title or easements. We need to understand that and then move forward on that process. We expect to notify property owners of appraisal processes probably in either December. It'll more likely fall into January of next year. That's where we'll roll out the real estate acquisition process. And the first portion of that is sending out appraisers to the properties. So I will keep you posted on that progress. For state funding, as I highlighted a little bit under the MBK contract information, we've been very successful in having the state commit capital outlay funding to our program. So we have a total of $161 million for our program. The state, just from their actions, the state is fully committed to our program. Under federal funding, as I've presented to the council previously, the federal side of the funding is the major, the majority portion of funding for our program. We're hoping to achieve a 65% level of funding for the program. The vehicle to get that federal funding is the general reevaluation report. So we're currently underway on that report. We started that in 2009. We're in our third year. It's a long process. The Army Corps Headquarters has recently issued what they call a three-by-three-by-three guideline. What it essentially is, is to reduce the scope, schedule, and budget for that study. So they wanna do it in three years, no more than $3 million. And what was, they wanted to put enough information in a three-ring binder. So they just wanna minimize the amount of material and the amount of content that goes into these studies. So we're all for that. We've been meeting very closely with the staff over at the district. Because unfortunately, they issued this directive, but they didn't issue a lot of guidance with it. So the district staff are sort of trying to understand, "Well, what does this mean? How do I implement this three-by-three-by-three? And what do I reduce from the current way we do business?" So they've been trying to figure it out. We went to their project review board a few weeks ago to really request that they move this thing forward. And they, absent guidance from headquarters, "Let's just figure it out ourselves. Figure out what the vision of three-by-three-by-three is and move forward and implement that and just go." And they're doing that. So I'm very optimistic in the approach that they're taking now. So it's looking favorable. The new schedule, as they apply this three-by-three guidance, is we're looking at a chief's report in July of 2014. So that's critical for our program. And it moved up from what they were talking about late 2015, early 2016. So it's a real positive move for us. On the federal credit side of things, as the council is aware, the ASA, the Assistant Secretary of the Army rescinded Section 104 credit back in May of 2011. Actually, it was when we were out there for cap-to-cap. We had our 104 application at headquarters, and they let us know when we were in their meeting room. So that was very unfortunate for our program because we had spent a lot of monies to get us to that point, and a lot of time to get us to the point where we could apply for Section 104. So the good news is Congresswoman Matsui last week had a meeting with the ASA and talked about West Sacramento and our situation. And the ASA is familiar with it because we've been doing a lot of outreach on our behalf. And they requested, or they suggested, we send in a, what do we call it here? A exemption request. So we are, we have written an exemption request. It's gone through, back to Congresswoman Matsui's staff. As soon as they approve it, it's gonna come back for the mayor's signature, and we're gonna get that out. So we're hoping to get some sort of federal credit. It's probably gonna be the Section 221 credit for the rivers and CHP. So that's a really positive situation for our program. So I'll keep you posted on that. On FEMA coordination, we don't have a lot of news on FEMA, but what we have is good news. So we're currently still Zone X. We've been having a long dialogue with FEMA when they first came in to remap us back in 2008. So they're very aware of our program, all the work that we're doing, the aggressive approach that we're taking to move levy improvements forward. And they've pretty much made a commitment to us that they're gonna delay our mapping until we get this Southport project built. Because that's a key aspect of when we can apply for, or what we think we can get, an A-99 mapping designation. So that's huge for our program. It's gonna, but we have to keep showing progress. That's what we have to keep doing to keep FEMA at bay. So, and that's the approach that we're taking. So we're moving forward as quickly as we can. Lastly, on the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan, so this is DWR's plan. They, the plan went to the Central Valley Flood Protection Board and was adopted on June 30th. And DWR is now issuing draft guidelines to all the agencies for regional flood management planning. So they split the Central Valley into nine regions, and each of the regions are gonna submit a plan. Basically, they wanna, they want the regions to submit what their projects are, try to prioritize them, you know, sort of have a partnership amongst the agencies, and submit that into DWR. So we're looking to take the lead on the region, our region, which consists of Yolo County, Safka, City of Sacramento, City of Woodland, Sacramento County, and some of the other agencies in Yolo County. So that we would be the, we would lead that planning effort. We would partner with all our member agencies and help deliver a plan to DWR. So we have a meeting coming up in several weeks. We're having a lot of cooperation and coordination with Yolo County and all the member agencies. So that is, that's a really positive thing for us to be in the mix there so we can assure that our projects are in the plan and prioritize as high as we can. And essentially, the Central Valley Flood Protection Plan, they have prioritized urban area improvements. Because 80% of the risk that's in the region is in the urban area. So they need to devote a lot of the monies that they have left available on the Props 1E and 84 to protect those urban areas and buy, essentially buy down that risk. So that's my update for this evening. Staff's recommendation is to approve the contract with MBK Engineers to continue to provide services to the West Sacramento Levy Improvement Program.
Right, thank you very much. Are there questions, comments? Well, thank, if there are none. No, I couldn't agree more. I had the opportunity to work with them and watch them in action. And in fact, they're driving so much of what's happening in our region relative to flood protection. We're very fortunate to have MBK as our partner. And the cost-share agreements that you talked about earlier, the 90% is incredible. That certainly gives us the opportunity to continue to move forward on so many fronts. And the levy work that was hit, that occurred near the CHP Academy and in Broderick there gives us tremendous protection that we didn't have just last year or so. It sounds like you're certainly moving along, and a lot of progress is being made. Thank you very much, Mike. Right, we're back to the council for...
Mr. Mayor, I'd move that we approve contract with MBK Engineers, the amount of $1,849,000 for services to support West Sacramento Levy Improvements and authorize the city manager and his designee to take any and all actions reasonably necessary to complete the work described in the contract, including approval of minor contract amendments that, in the opinion of the city manager, will not materially alter the purpose of the contract nor increase the total compensation due under the contract by more than 10%.
Right, motion, looking for a second? Okay, so motion and a second. Doubles and favors signify by saying aye. All right, motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Very good presentation, good information. All right, moving on back up to item eight, which is a discussion of proposed advisory measure and consideration of Resolution 1239, calling for an election and requesting the Board of Supervisors to permit the county clerk to render specified services to the city related to the conduct of a municipal election on November 6, 2012. Mr. Law, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor Protem, council members. I'm just gonna provide some very brief policy context related to the proposed advisory measure and turn it to the council for discussion. The Community Investment Action Plan, which was adopted in May, set forth some recommendations for giving the city the tools and resources it will need to continue its historic investment in strategic infrastructure and economic development in the post-redevelopment environment. And one of the key recommendations of that plan was to utilize the former redevelopment funds, to the extent possible to fund community investment projects and activities that were traditionally funded by redevelopment property tax increment. To implement that recommendation, the council adopted a budget policy for the current fiscal year that stated that all revenue resulting from the dissolution of the redevelopment agency would be reserved for community investment purposes. And the plan also recommended the council follow up on that budget policy by placing an advisory measure on the ballot to effectuate this policy in future years. I wanted to point out, as we did in the staff report, if passed, the measure wouldn't provide the bondable source of revenue that redevelopment tax increment used to. But it would provide a better degree of certainty over budgeting, community investment projects and funds on a pay-as-you-go basis going forward. And that's really the primary intent of the measure. I wanted to point out that we were able to confirm today that, from the county, that we actually have until August 10th to decide on the final wording for this measure. We weren't confirmed on that at the time we did the staff report. But we are recommending at a minimum that the council discuss the proposed ballot measure wording tonight, propose any desired changes to the wording. And if the council desires, you could adopt the resolution to place the measure on the November ballot. With that, we're able to answer any questions that the council has and to help guide the council's policy discussion.
Great, thank you. Mr. Ludes, I'm sorry. There is, well, we have no slips to speak, and it's not a public hearing, it's just a presentation and discussion by the council. So would you wanna lead up?
Sure. Thanks, Aaron, for the update and the brief overview of this. And I think it, it's a good time to have this discussion and supportive of us having a discussion around the direction we wanna go as a council, and also looking at the meeting of the 10th. Is that right? Or actually, we would meet on the...
It'd be, I'm sorry, it'd be the August 1st.
The August 1st meeting, and then we could have time to talk about this and then move it to the 1st to get on the ballot by the 10th. So on the substance of it, though, obviously, this is a big step for our city, in my opinion. It's, it couldn't come, I think, at a better time and a better opportunity for our city to have a discussion. Because it sort of points to where we are as a city financially, and where we are as a city, and where we've been as a city. Because I think it is, it certainly, we're not, the measure does not ask for any new taxes. It's an advisory vote on revenue that was used for this purpose anyway. And it just happened to be implemented through the redevelopment agency. And now that the redevelopment agency is dissolved, and the county appropriates money for the obligations that are still being managed by the, and correct me if I'm wrong here, but it's appropriating those same tax increment funds and property tax funds to the obligations we have. Any leftover funds that would flow back to tax, and these would flow back to us. So again, they were going to the redevelopment agency, now they're coming back to us. So the strategy here, which we talked about previously from the Pro-West SAC team and then from the Community Investment Action Plan, which you staff drafted and Aaron presented, it really calls for us to say, okay, two critical policy questions that I had, and this answers, is that A is financially, kind of where we stand today as a city, that we could somehow find funds to continue the mission we've started and the growth that we've seen over the last 10 years, thanks in a large part to redevelopment and the planning of the city founders years ago to kind of get the ball rolling. The second kind of critical issue, it stands for me, is kind of the city's and our constituents' support of such an endeavor. I think that was one of the things that the Pro-West SAC team voiced unilaterally to the folks that volunteered for that. They, by and large, supported that we need to keep moving forward because it really does push forward our agenda of kind of, as we've seen, West Capitol Avenue change, we're seeing the riverfront change, we've seen neighborhoods change for the better, thanks to our proper use of redevelopment. This gives us the opportunity to do both. But again, standing on the opportunity that we, are we financially in a safe, sound area time in our budget that we can do this? And I think that we are, and I wouldn't have supported this throughout this entire, entire past year, trying to get to this point. You know, again, this really does point to, you know, another part of where we are as a city, I believe, is that we're, I've not heard of other cities yet that have started to take action on what future redevelopment, what future, and it's not redevelopment, what the future, how they're gonna grow. And I think one of the principles we talked about through redevelopment as a council, that we talked about through the Pro-West SAC team and the Community Investment Action Plan, was we've gotta find a way to stand on our own to keep these going. And somehow, you know, with this residual revenue that's coming back either, and it's not just, one of the comments I have on the language I'll get to in a second, it's not just property taxes that are coming back, it's revenue that's coming back because at some point, we're gonna have to sell property. And we're gonna get revenue back from that. So it's sort of our reserve and our rainy day fund so that we can, when the next project comes along, we have some money to put in the game. So I'm just gonna talk quickly about how the language is, because I think it is important to get this right, if I can find it on my iPad reader here. But it reads currently, "Should the city reserve ongoing surplus property tax?" And I'm having an issue with some of the wording there already. So this isn't surplus property tax, it's actually, surplus is a word that we just need to lose. It's existing property tax that was once given to the redevelopment agency, and now it's just coming back to the city proper. So it's existing, and it will be ongoing. And the second thing we need to, I think, eliminate is the word... And the second thing we need to, I think, eliminate is the word prop, two words, property tax. Because while property tax could be, it's going to be a, 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 probably a large share of it, we're going to see revenue come back because, as I said, there's going to be properties that we'll have to, we, we, that will be, the sale of properties will have to come back. So, we may get other revenue from that and probably other sources too that I'm not thinking of at the moment. But I think those are two things that we have to, to, to strike from this language because I think people will just read that wrong. And it, it's not clear, clear. The other part of the, the phrasing we have here in terms of, we have to state, of course, it's coming from the dissolution of the redevelopment agency. But it's important to point out, point to the Community Investment Plan, Action Plan that we adopted. And in there, there's definitions of what we intended to use that for. I think it's very clear and we, and my, we try to see, to put in some of those, the nature of those. It won't be all defining in a 30-word sentence, but we need to give the public some indication of what it is. And I think we have to invite people to see what the, what the Community Investment Action Plan was because it does talk about the need to further investment in our community through public infrastructure, through rights, acquiring rights of way, putting together properties so that could further our development goals. So, we do have to give them, I, I, I'm supportive of how it reads to an extent, how it has some of the specific types of uses it's going to have. And the only question I have is, is are there more that we need to clue, are there's two vague still? But that's sort of, I think we can work through that wording in the next week and a half before the next meeting. But I'm, I'm supportive of this moving forward. I think it's an important point in our city that we're sort of taking the, as a city, the first step forward on defining ourselves in this post redevelopment era. We've, we've adopted the Community Action Plan and to me, this is really an opportunity for us to ask our constituents to, to, to agree with us. And they've agreed with us for the most part. They've seen the benefits of a city that has grown tremendously in the past 10 years and we're committed for that going forward. Those are my comments for today.
Yeah, I'm, I'm supportive of this as well. And I think, you know, we can probably work the language a little bit. My concern would be, we want to make sure it's legally binding, you know, in terms of the, the measure. And to the extent we can incorporate language in the other study here, we can do that. But I'm, I'm not sure about if you can refer to an off-document, you know, in terms of coming up with the definition. But I think the reason, you know, it's been explained why we're doing this is because we've got, I mean, we've been pretty disciplined in West Sacramento in how we spend general fund money, which is pretty much discretionary. Problem now is that it's going into one big pool and we have to be more disciplined in order to not only invest in the human infrastructure that we have in the city, but the physical infrastructure, which is long-term over a period of years. And we have, I think, a, a good reputation in this city after Measures J and K and how we've reported that to people, how we've done what we said we're going to do with the money coming in, that, you know, as we're going through and promoting this to the public, I mean, it's, it's pretty similar to, to that. You know, how we've been able to spend the money under Measures J and K, the way the public wanted us to spend the money, we do accountings and that type of thing. So, we would probably want to do the same thing in this, that there would be some type of, you know, reporting afterwards on money that's being used for this. But, so I'm, I'm supportive of moving forward with this. I'm, I would be happy to entertain language refinement as we move forward as well.
Yeah, and I would just respond to that comment that we did include in the Community Investment Action Plan, a, a recommendation to do similar style reporting that we do with Measure K on community investment funds. These funds would be included in that, in that reporting.
That's great. Okay, thanks. So, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so, so I guess, Aaron, one of the major benefits of J and K was the fact that we do do the reporting. And we, in essence, sort of open up the books to the public every year and say, this is where your tax dollars were spent. How do you incorporate that into, that's something that I think would be good in the ballot argument? Or, or maybe that's just good in the ballot support position? Okay, okay, I see where that's going. All right. Yeah, no, I, I, I support this. You know, it's an advisory, so it really doesn't tie future councils' hands if there is a great need that some future councils, you know, determine that there should be. But at the same time, so I, I, I think that this, I, the only thing, I guess the only thing that cautions me a little bit would be if it failed. And then I would go, wait a minute, where do we, you know, where do we go from here? And so, but I mean, I do think that if the community understands the Community Action Plan or the community, and the Community Investment Program, if we can get them to really understand it, then we will, I think this will pass overwhelmingly because it's a good document. It, it, it really gives us some building blocks to continue to do some of the things that we have done for the past 20 years. And so, I mean, I think that, and those blocks are, it, it, it's necessary, but it's, so, anyway, but this is something I support. But I do think that we ought to tweak the language a little bit. And, I mean, I like the idea that it talks about projects such as bridges, streets, parks, public infrastructure. I think that that, that goes a long way, but, so, anyway. But I do think that there could be some tweaking in here and have to see what kind of language and sort of kick it around in our own little circle, so to speak, and, and see if we can come up with some language that just really lets the folks understand and know what we're trying to do here.
All right. Well, I agree with, with all my, everything that my colleagues have already said. The only thing that I would add in the ballot statement, language that says ongoing, ongoing property tax revenue. And really, I mean, once you sell the property, you're only going to get that revenue once, right? I mean, I guess it almost makes it sound as if there's an ongoing stream of steady property tax revenue. And I guess, it would seem to me that we would probably want to articulate that this is actually a one-time, I mean, one, you only sell the property one time, although the stream itself will fluctuate depending on how quickly we have to dissolve or to sell the properties, right?
Well, yeah, actually, that's going back to something Councilman Liddesby said earlier. You have really two sources of potential revenue that we're talking about. One would be the, the proceeds from the sale of real estate assets. But the other, which is ongoing, is the, the funding that used to be redevelopment property tax increment. Once, once the obligations are paid, the tax entities get their proportion.
That's right.
So, we would get our proportion and that's really the majority of the funds we would be talking about. It's, it's that former redevelopment property tax increment that was used for that purpose that is now coming to the city as an ongoing revenue stream.
But you're not, you're, so you were referring to both then? And, I mean, is this intended to capture both or just the latter?
It would. By removing the words property tax, the intent, I believe, was to capture both.
Okay, that's why I recommended to remove property tax because it is both.
Very good. Well, I know that the mayor's been a very vocal and outspoken critic of this entire mess that's occurred as a result of the dissolution of the redevelopment agencies. And I know he wanted to chime in on some of this conversation. So, it's, it sounds good that August 10th has been discovered as a new date with which we need to come up with our language, so that helps. So, otherwise, I mean, I think it makes good sense. I think it, it shows once again that we're mindful of, of the, the, the need to invest strategically in our public infrastructure. I mean, everybody can agree that we've done a good job of investing in our streets, bridges, transportation, parks and public infrastructure. And I don't see any reason why we should change from that. So, it makes good sense, but I, I think bringing it back once more for that sort of final spin before we send it out to the, to the public is, is important. And I know the mayor would certainly appreciate being able to chime in on the language. So, all right, thank you very much. Thank you. So, I don't have any slips to speak on this item, but this is sort of a presentation workshop, if you will. Okay. So, that's a now from the President of the Chamber. Did you have anything prepared that you wanted to share with Eric? You've waited for two hours. You've waited for two hours. I figured you probably had something you wanted to share with him.
Sure. Good evening, council. City manager and attorney, my name's Eric Flick, local resident and small business owner. And I'm here to absolutely lend my support on the approval of this resolution and getting it to the ballot. I, I really honestly think it's a fine, it's an example and aligns very well with the, the fiscal prudence that, you know, the city has really shown over the years. And, and I think this is, once again, it's one step going that, that direction. It's, it's going to target this flow of revenue to a specific, to a specific direction. And I think it, it's going to continue our, you know, opportunities for growth in infrastructure and strategic growth, as, as you guys have already described. So, I absolutely, as a, as a resident and business owner, I lend my support to the approval of this and hope to see it pass. Thank you.
Great, thank you. All right. No other public comment, we're, no action is necessary. So, that, we're concluded with that item. Thank you very much. That takes us back to, I think it's Item 9, is it, that's all we have left, right? The continued consideration of Phase 1 of South Elevation Perspective for the West Capitol Commons Project and Bailey's Landing. And I think we have a request to continue that item, right? Ms. Hamilton, is it?
Yes, we're requesting a continuance on this item to August 1st.
Okay, great, thank you. So, do we, Mr. City Attorney, do we need a motion on that or is that sufficient?
Uh, yes, a motion.
All right, so, all right. Motion and a second. Dullers in favor signify by saying aye. Motion carries unanimously. We will continue that item, so thank you very much. And that concludes our regular agenda. Item 12A, council calendar.
Yes, Mr. Mayor Protem, I wanted to point out that on the calendar, the filing period opened for city council and mayor on the 16th of this month, that was Monday, and it's going to be closing on August 10th. So, anybody who might be interested in filing papers should do, do so within that time period. And then on August 7th is the annual national night out and the police department will be coming out with their, their schedule of events throughout the community.
What's the date on that?
What's the date on that, Carol?
August 7th.
August 7th? No.
All right. No questions on that? Next item is city manager report.
Mayor Protem, council members, I, in your packet...
Your mic's not on there.
In your packet is a, a brief memo that outlines our current budget situation in view of the media that was attention on San Bernardino's bankruptcy this week. The front and staff prepared just a short memo. We are not in anywhere close to San Bernardino situation, although we're going to continue to monitor our revenue, our expenditures and emphasis on cost controls here within the city. But there's a short memo there for your information.
Great, thank you. Mr. Mayor Protem, if I may, I, I, Mr. City Manager, thank you for the, the memo. I, I wanted to make a request, if possible, because this does lay out a, a brief update on sort of where we are and, and year-to-date in our budget. But I, but I think it would be helpful if we could come back at some time later and maybe delve into some of the key financial underpinnings of our city, just so we can maybe, for the public's sake, kind of dig in just a little bit, maybe in workshop fashion, where maybe you and our, our finance team can just kind of lay out our, some of the key financial measures we use, kind of where we are. I know folks, I mean, I've been asked more in the last two weeks about our financial situation than I have in the, in nearly two years I've been on the council, just because of the headlines. And I appreciate this, I can communicate this. But having a workshop that we can tell folks that, hey, maybe tune in that night, would be a good, an absolutely good use of, of our time. Help us understand what are the differences between what, what, where we are versus where a Stockton or another city is.
Maybe as we could compile our end-of-year...
Your, your mic's off, I think.
It's off again, huh? As we compile our end-of-year fiscal reports, that would be appropriate time to come back with that workshop. Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I think we used to also do citizen budgets too, like a very summarized version of the budget that's for public consumption too. Used to be posted on the website. Like, you know, that, that would probably have a lot of this information, just kind of in a, in a nutshell, that would help.
Yep, great, great idea. Great, thank you very much. All right, city attorney report. Nothing to report. Staff direction from council members. Any items? And I don't see any future agenda items attached to this agenda. This staff, nope, there's nothing there. All right, so, Item F, Mr. Kristoff.
Move adjournment.
All right, we have a motion to adjourn. All's in favor, signify by saying aye. Motion to adjourn, thank you so much.